It's six o'clock and we are calling the meeting to order. I'm James Bell and tonight I'll be serving as the Chair. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for June 5th, 2025. We will hear the cases in order they appear on the agenda. The first matter of business is citizens' comments. Any citizen wishing to appear before a regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding any matter posted on the agenda was to sign up until later than 6:00 PM on the day of the meeting. If anyone signed up to speak, they will have three minutes to speak. Staff will time each citizen and provide a warning they have 30 seconds left. As if you're speaking on the UDC amendments are not being discussed today, this is your chance to speak. The first person we have is Abel Hernandez wishing to speak about item 4.1 on our agenda. And if you could state your name and address for the record.
I will do that. Abel Hernandez, 608 North Vinton Avenue, Lubbock, Texas. Hello, Mr. Chair and members of the Commission. I am here today speaking in opposition and I have it noted as amendment number one. I believe this is identified as section 39.03.023D. So let's begin by considering the fundamental purpose of the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is to ensure the orderly development of the city. How does this proposed amendment promote orderly development? The answer, it doesn't. What's the public's benefit of this amendment? Honestly, there isn't one. Allowing a multi-story building to have a larger sign area would be unfair to other businesses. The current UDC as it stands strikes a good balance with wall signs. It's both fair and reasonable. We have a noted here in a case, it's Farr versus Tippett. It's particularly relevant here as it demonstrates that this amendment would result in favorable treatment that conflicts with an established comprehensive plan. This situation is a clear example of piecemeal zoning. The proposed UDC amendment may impact only a small number of garages, but it still fails to ensure a consistent and fair signage regulation, effectively resulting in spot zoning. Spot zoning usually occurs when a parcel is rezoned to benefit a single owner, introducing a use that doesn't fit with the surrounding area or the overall zoning plan. It can't be merely approved upon request. Additionally, this amendment appears to align more with specific use zoning, which shouldn't be part of the UDC either. Both spot zoning and specific use zoning should not be applied in this case. Also, according to Texas Local Government Code, section 211.004, zoning regulations must follow a comprehensive plan. This proposed amendment doesn't do that. It ignores any consistent citywide approach to signage. Instead, it creates a special exception for certain structures without providing a clear justification why they should be treated differently. Understand that at a recent meeting, the City Council rejected a variance for alcohol sales near a school because they felt it would set a bad precedent. This amendment does the same thing. So where's the justification or benefit to the citizens here? So I strongly urge this Commission to not recommend the proposed amendment number 31 to the Council. Thank you for your time and good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Next speaker we have is Grace Rogers, also on item 4.1.
Good afternoon. My name is Grace Rogers and I have resided since 1967 at 5409 21st Street. I speak this afternoon in opposition to item 31 and urge the P&amp;Z not to forward this item to City Council, though frankly, I would rather be at home rooting for the Lady Raiders softball team. Go Raiders! Some years ago, I wrote a letter to the AJ expressing my distaste of the giant banners hanging from the Raider parking garage, and I spoke in opposition to them at some meeting. It's a long time ago, probably a ZBA meeting. My recollection is that it was vote, the banners were voted against at that point, but they remained hanging. So I called the city offices and spoke to someone who told me the owner had been given a variance and there was to be a sign experiment for a number of years, maybe seven. There was also mention of a potential lawsuit threatened against the city, and I'm not sure that it's a fact, but then later today I found probably it was. Now, the sign experiment has concluded. The ZBA has denied an extension, I understand, and the banners should come down. But once again, the owner wants this amendment, which will let the banners continue to hang. Ugly, often faded, sometimes blank, out of compliance, and for how long? Forever? Don't fall for this bait and switch tactic. How is this amendment fair to citizens like me and countless others who support UDC sign standards? How is this fair to business owners who follow the sign standards and keep Lubbock from looking like Amarillo, our cities inundated with giant signs and banners? I travel up and down the Marshall Sharp Freeway on a regular basis. I came by today coming to this meeting. I go to campus events, to Buddy Holly Hall, to Luca, to Civic Center, to downtown restaurants and meetings, and to the airport. Every time I pass those giant banners which border the freeway, I am appalled. They are distracting and dangerous. To make it worse, they are directly across from Jones AT&amp;T Stadium Complex, one of the most beautiful such facilities in the country. And across from the stadium are those tacky, cheap-looking banners. What a distraction and a contrast in taste. Please help beautify Lubbock, uphold the UDC sign standards, and vote in opposition to amendment item 31 tonight. Let's end this here and now, and go Lady Raiders, beat Texas tonight.
Agree with you on that. Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
Good evening, Planning and Zoning. My name is Chris Nichols. I'm from the law firm Brady &amp; Hamilton, and we represent the owners of the Raider Park Garage. We were here, Mr. Brady was here a few weeks ago during the joint meeting between Planning and Zoning and City Council where there was a significant presentation of all sides and opinions regarding the proposed amendment. And I'm just here to say that we stand by the comments that we made, that Planning and Zoning heard and attended and considered. And, you know, we ask that, you know, Planning and Zoning do its job. It's here to make recommendations, not make binding decisions, and we look forward to having those recommendations presented to City Council.
Thank you very much. Next citizen is Stephen Falk.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Falk. My address is 2022 Broadway. Excuse me, I'm a practicing architect. I was also at that public hearing that y'all attended. Appreciate y'all doing that. One thing, if there are any questions that came into your mind, I'd more than gladly answer them, but those signs are not wall signs. Wall sign is really touched on in table 39.03.023-2, where it talks about 20% of the facade, but it also speaks to 10% per tenant. The critical word there is tenant. There is no HEB in that garage. There is no Gene Messer Ford or whatever chivalry in that garage. Those are billboards, not allowed in that district. Now, I know the city can say the way they don't control the content, but they do control the fact that they're for tenants. We've done, our firm has done thousands of buildings where we have a sign that speaks to the tenants that are in that building, the use that's in that building. Not in this case. This is a case that if it is blessed by your commission and goes to council and is blessed, is really done for one building in this town. And I suppose you could say that it could be the same kind of wall sign on the garage at Covenant because it is tall enough. Could be across the street of where Mr. Rager was at one time. It is not an attractive thing. We have fought tooth and nail to keep billboards out of Lubbock and not look, as spoken to just a moment ago, like Amarillo. This is being done for one person, one owner, period. I encourage you to not approve or recommend the adoption of item number 31 that's on the list that was presented in the public hearing this past several weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Falk.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. My name is Patrick Little. My address is 8201 East Erath Street, Houston, Texas. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. We're here to respectfully request the Planning and Zoning Commission consider an amendment to the UDC, specifically the limitation of a single type of housing on a block face. The specific property is located at 2009 Avenue K, Block 3, Lots 5 and 6. We provided a handout and you can see a summary of our points as well as the sketches in the document. We're currently under contract to purchase the building with the intent to convert it to an eight-unit apartment. The property is zoned high-density residential, and there are other multifamily properties nearby, so the area is well-suited for this use. However, there are no other multifamily structures on this specific block face, which triggers the restriction, even though the zoning allows for high-density. This building has a solid structure, ample room for parking, and was previously under renovation to become apartments. The work was halted six years ago due to the same zoning provision, and the building has sat idle since. We believe the renovation would provide value to the city of Lubbock by improving a vacant property in line with the city's downtown revitalization goals and adding quality housing options in the central already-zoned location. We understand the intent behind preserving neighborhood character, but in cases like this, the provision may unintentionally block modest, compatible infill, especially when it aligns with the HDR zoning. We respectfully ask this issue be considered in the current UDC amendment cycle, and we thank you for your time and are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sirs.
Next speaker is Chad Berry. Chris Berry, sorry, I can't read.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. My name is Chris Berry, harvesting Beattie Bahomes, 6307 82nd Street. We're just coming in favor for support of item 4.1 in regards to 39.10.00, oh, let me get this straight. 39.10.002, excuse me, and specifically in terms of the single-family cottage definition. We're just wanting to help clarify the restriction that was put on there, the last amendment that passed, limiting it to 1,300 square feet. There's some discrepancy in the understanding of what 1,300 square foot is, whether it's under roof or livable square foot. So we've worked with city staff and give a lot of kudos to Robbie and Kristen. They helped kind of guide us and direct us in some of those discussions and reaching an outcome that we believe is favorable for the entirety of the city in regards to cottage definition. So we just want to just come vocalize our support for that and in favor of 4.1 in regards to that amendment. Appreciate it.
Hey, what was the item number?
39.10.002, and I think the definition is .0025. It wasn't on that cumulative list, but Ronnie came and spoke at the joint meeting a couple weeks ago to try to get that added. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Gordon Wilkerson. I'm with Wilkerson Properties at 501 East 66th. You shortly have in your hands an amendment, a proposed amendment to the UDC code that we're requesting. The new UDC places some pretty severe restrictions on industrial development. There are three aspects of this amendment. One related to signs, which I won't spend a lot of time on. The other related to setbacks, and the last related to loading zones. Made a full presentation at the joint meeting of the Council and the Commission a few weeks ago, provided much more detail than I'll be able to do tonight, but short version is that the new code restricts us to about 75% of what we could build under the previous code. We feel like these changes to allow monument signs on the corner of industrial lots, to return setbacks to what they were in the previous zoning code, and to make loading zones at the discretion of the developer as opposed to requiring them or making them mandatory, would be beneficial to industrial development in general and specifically to the city's tax base. Appreciate your thoughtful consideration of this amendment, and if you find it warranted, your support as the Council considers amendments to the UDC. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mary Kreitz.
Good evening. My name's Mary Kreitz, and I live at 4617 8th Street. I'm also speaking against the proposed amendment numbered 31 in the handout a couple of weeks ago on wall signage that increases, increased wall signage for garages. Mr. Zach Brady, who spoke at the recent joint public hearing, and then another attorney here even tonight, has made no secret that this amendment would appease their client, Raider Park Garage, who's looking to keep their overly large signs up on that building. I want to make two points tonight. The first is really a question to planning staff, and that is, at the public hearing, it was stated that the Raider Park Garage is 108 feet tall. Would staff accept changing the amendment's minimum height to be 100 feet instead of the 50 feet currently in that proposed wording? I think that's important for this group to consider, and I hope that planning staff would allow that. Secondly, let's back up for a, secondly, let's back up for a moment. The purpose of the P&amp;Z is to look out for the citizens of Lubbock, not the interests of one owner, particularly one that according to a newspaper article, has paused a lawsuit against the city to pursue this amendment. I don't think P&amp;Z should be doing favors for just one owner, and I don't think you generally do. It seems to me, if you capitulate and accommodate one owner to potentially avoid lawsuits, well, in reality, it seems to me that that just breeds more lawsuits. And in my world, my business world, a deal's a deal. The plaintiff, Raider Park, agreed to a ZBA deal back in 2012, and in fact, ZBA at that time lengthened the review time to seven years, and the owner in the minutes of that meeting states specifically that the length of time was more than fine with him. It's too bad the plaintiff isn't accepting the ZBA's later review decisions that they knew could happen. That's not the way we do business in West Texas, or at least it's not the way I do business in West Texas, and I don't think it does for you. This amendment does not serve a good citywide purpose, which is what the UDC is supposed to do. I urge P&amp;Z to not recommend proposed amendment number 31, wall signage on garages, to the Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mike Moss.
Good evening. I've got some slides that I brought down, so can I? Is it this one?
Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Mike Moss. I live at 3302 42nd Street. I've lived here in Lubbock since 1977, but I'm here tonight to urge the Planning and Zoning Commission to not recommend adopting the item known as section 39.03.023.D. I think also known as item 31 in previous meetings, but specifically dealing with the increasing the area allowable on wall signs for parking garages. And so, you know, I guess I asked the question, why do we want to deviate from the current UDC policy and allow larger signs? This amendment, if it gets passed on, would allow for a larger sign area on buildings such as the parking garage here. And, you know, it discriminates, if you will, with other commercial properties who maybe don't have that height, there aren't a parking garage. And so, so I just asked the question, what does this achieve by doing that? And as an architect, you know, we often draw in pictures, if you will, and the old adage, a picture is worth a thousand words. And so, as you can see here, this is what we have existing on the parking garage, a view showing the southeast elevation. And so what we see here, it does represent 35%, the signage area represents 35% of the elevation of the building, of the side of the building that the sign is on. And so, as you can see, it's considerable. You know, we're not New York City, we're not Manhattan, we're not Times Square, we're not a walkable community. You know, they seem to make the signs as tall as the buildings and as wide as the buildings, but that's not Lubbock, Texas. And I think as you take a good look at this image, because it could become the model for other structures, parking garages here in town, should this amendment be passed on to the Council and adopted. You know, there's a risk of questionable advertisements. There's nothing to control what goes on these billboards, very limited control. And so, while right now the advertisements, I think, are in good taste in local businesses, that's not necessarily what it could always be, or the next owner of the parking garage or the one after that. And so, that gives me concern of being of the size they are. That's not something that I think is appropriate. So you know who I root for. Okay, I just showed my hand. But anyway, you know, enough is enough. I think while Gene Messer and HEB are certainly reasonable, we know that can't always be the case. And how would somebody at the Texas Tech football, how would they feel about this sign? These next two signs or slides show what 20%, which is what the current ordinance is, that's a sign that covers 20% of the elevation of the building. So to me, those are still plenty big, and show advertisement, but not to the fact of 35%. So I encourage you to not recommend adoption of this ordinance or this change to the current UBC. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. And our last speaker, Bernie Bass.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I'm Bernie Bass. I live at 4802 18th Street. I'm a lifelong Lubbock resident. I'm a lawyer, have been for 53 years. I remember sometime back, I thought I would be a lot smarter at this kind of stuff after 50 years of messing with it, but I'm not. I always get asked the question, Bernie, when are you going to retire? And I tell them that my first day of retirement is probably going to be out at Rest Haven. I don't think it's that funny either. I here also to speak against proposed amendment 31 to the Uniform Development Code. My friend and colleague Zach Brady and his firm do a good job on what they do. They represent Raider Park Garage there on Marshall Sharp Freeway across from the stadium. It may be the sole beneficiary of this amendment due to the overly large signs on that building, one for HEB and the other for Gene Messer. This amendment in effect is a one-owner deal. It can be argued that several things of concern should be considered. One is traffic safety. Car accidents are caused by distracted drivers, inattention and distraction to critical factors for road safety. The Supreme Court and our Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals in some cases has said that that certainly needs to be considered in dealing with matters like this. The issue of these signs, I drive by them two to four times a day. I don't look at them anymore, but people who are not comfortable or not usually driving down that road may well glance up and look at it. And I saw that it had been said at the last meeting, well, there are not that many wrecks out there. Well, if there's one wreck and you're a part of that wreck, that's one wreck too many. What they're looking to do here, it seems to me like, is what we'd call spot zoning. No parking garages are comparable to the one in Lubbock, and you can't spot zone something just because someone wants it done. The proposed amendment would carve out an exception, a special exception, which appears for now at least one structure. What it's about, parking garages that warrant the particular use being carved out to receive special privileges. I think P&amp;Z's job is to look out for all of Lubbock and not the interest of just one owner, and there are plenty of other advertising avenues that other businesses can use to promote the things that they do and sell. HEB and Gene Messer do a great job advertising on television. I was on the Lubbock 2040 Comprehensive Plan Committee that met for two years and chaired by my good friend John Zweiger. Several goals came out of that committee that was passed along to the city. One, improving the aesthetics in the corridors leading to the airport. This is one. The other is the placing of advertising around Texas Tech. And thirdly, creating design standards and gateway designations for key areas. Again, which this is one. The wall signs on the parking garages, this one appears to be for the sole beneficiary, and this amendment would violate the spirit and interest of the 2040 Plan for one, count them one, business. I hope that P&amp;Z does not recommend to the City Council that it pass this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. Okay, the next matter of business is the approval of amendments for both the May 1st, 2025, regular meeting, and the May 22nd, 2025, joint special meeting with the City Council. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion?
All second.
And a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Motion carries seven to zero. The next matter of business are the zone cases. Please note that item, Zone Cases 3058-H and Zone Case 3524, which are items 3.5 and 3.7, have been postponed to the July 10th Planning and Zoning Commission. Okay, when you call up your zone case, the following steps will be taken. The Chair will call the first case, and will invite city staff to make the presentation on the case. The Board may ask staff questions, but board comments and debate should not occur. The Chair will open the public hearing on the case. The Chair will call the applicant representative to provide any additional comment. The applicant will need to clearly state their name and address for the record and briefly explain their case. After the applicant has spoken, the Chair asks for anyone in opposition of the item to speak. Those speaking in opposition should give their name and address and then speak to the Board. The Chair will then ask for anyone in favor of the item to speak. Those speaking in favor should give their name and address and speak to the Board. After all the public comments, the Chair will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, we will not hear any further comments from the public. First item we have is the zone case, item 3.1, Zone Case Number 1943E.
Good evening, Board. I am Sam Brackeen with the Planning Department, and this is Zone Case 1943E. The applicant is AMD Engineering LLC. They are requesting a zone change from Heavy Commercial District, HC. They are requesting a zone change from Heavy Commercial District HC to Medium Density Residential District MDR. The property is located south of North Loop Two-eighty-nine and west of North Memphis Avenue. Ten letters were sent out, and we have received one back in favor. Here's the notification map showing one in favor. The aerial map shows apartments and vacant land to the north, apartments to the south, apartments to the east, and apartments and vacant land to the west. The zoning map shows this property's owned Heavy Commercial District HC. The surrounding properties are zoned HC and High Density Residential District HDR to the north, Auto Urban Commercial District AC, Medium Density Residential District MDR and HDR to the east, HDR to the south, and AC and HDR to the west. The future land use map designates this area for residential low-density land uses. Here is a view of the subject property, as well as views to the north, south, and east. Here's an exhibit provided by the applicant. The future land use map designates this area for residential low-density land uses. The proposed zone change to MDR is in conformance with this designation and is appropriate at this location, being adjacent to existing MDR zoning. The proposed zone change is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and will be appropriate at the proposed location. The proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. The property is located south of North Loop Two-eighty-nine, which is designated as a freeway, and west of Memphis Avenue, which is designated as a local street by the Master Thoroughfare Plan Twenty-Eighteen. Freeways are intended to move high volumes of automobile traffic at relatively high speeds over long distances, and local streets typically provide access to smaller destination-oriented areas. Staff has no objection to this request, and I can take any questions at this time.
Is there any questions for staff at this time? Okay, thank you very much. Will now open the public hearing, is the applicant or his or her representative here?
Good evening, my name is Will Stevens with AMD Engineering, sixty-five fifteen Sixty-Eighth Street. This is a pretty simple downzone to MDR for an apartment complex, so I'll be happy to answer any other questions if you have them. Thank you all.
No questions, anybody have questions? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to this request? Okay, seeing none, is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Okay, so, none, we'll close the public hearing and call for a motion.
Approve to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? Looks like that's just going to fill in the rest of the apartments for that, in that area, to me. If there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and call the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next item is item three-point-two, Zone Case Number Eighteen Twenty-five A.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the commission, my name is Shane Spencer, and this is Case Eighteen Twenty-five dash A. The applicant is Keller Williams Commercial for Pinkies Inc., and they're requesting a zone change from Neighborhood Commercial and Heavy Commercial to Auto Urban Commercial District AC. The subject property is located north of Eighty-Second Street and east of University Avenue, and we've sent out seventy-seven notifications, and we've received back one in favor and one in opposition. Here's that notification map. The one letter we received in opposition did not elaborate on their reason for opposition. Here's the aerial map, there are homes to the northeast there, and businesses to the west and to the south. This is the zoning map, and there's property to the northeast, which is zoned Low Density Single Family District SF-two, and there is a mix of Neighborhood Commercial, Auto Urban Commercial, and Heavy Commercial to the west and to the south. The future land use map designates this property for commercial land uses. And here are photos of the subject and surrounding property. This is an exhibit provided by the applicant. So, the future land use map designates this area for commercial land uses, and the request conforms to this designation and would be appropriate considering the existing adjacent zoning districts and land uses. Therefore, this request is in complete conformance of the comprehensive plan principles. The proposed zone change is in conformance of the zoning ordinance and is compatible with the surrounding area, would not change the character of the existing development. The location is along Eighty-Second Street, which is designated as a principal arterial by the Master Thoroughfare Plan Twenty-Eighteen. Staff has no objections to the request, and I can take any questions at this time.
Any questions for the staff at this time? Okay, thank you.
I got a question. On a piece of property that's set back like that, how do your easements work? Or how would you require the easements to be for access?
As far as setbacks, or are we just access?
Access.
So, currently, a sliver of this actually does have access from Eighty-Second Street itself, that little sliver, little black area right there going to the south. It actually does have access through that drive.
Okay.
That's how they would get their access.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, is the applicant or his or her representative here? If you will come forward and state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Good evening, Jeremy Steen, one-oh-two-ten Quake Avenue. I'm here to give you some context on the project here and answer any questions that you guys might have. So, this property is the property located there on Eighty-Second, you're familiar with, has Discount Tire and Jiffy Lube, there's Alliance Credit Union, it's the triangle section back behind all of that. The intended use of that is another Bolton's Oil Change is going to go kind of in the center of that triangle section there. And I did have an opportunity to speak to the one that was in opposition, I don't know if he's here tonight, but his concern was the current owner is Pinkies Inc., and he was afraid that was going to be a liquor store. And so, when he found out it was going to be a Bolton's, he was actually happy to have Bolton's back in town, and was excited about it being around the corner, so. Just here to answer any other questions you guys might have.
I have a question. So, let's just say Bolton's doesn't build there and Pinkies owns it. I'm asking, does this zoning or changing it to allow for a Pinkies?
Allow for a?
A Pinkies, yes.
Yes, it would be permitted.
Is that, and Jeremy, is that the only access in and out, is that one road?
I believe there's also an access on university, an easement you can enter from university. But the city may come and leave.
Then show one of them.
There is a forty-foot access easement coming off of university.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other questions for that at this time? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? If so, please come forward, state your name and address for the records. Okay, seeing none, is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this request? Okay, seeing none, we'll close. You sure can, you got me right before I closed it.
The question about the Pinkies, this property is actually deemed restricted pretty heavily to restrict some of those, and that's one of the things is a liquor store.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we'll close the public hearing. For a matter of discussion, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? I think this is one that's been vacant for as long as I can remember.
Yeah, and I think your last comment, Jeremy, is very helpful.
Yeah, looking at the history, it used to be zoned, I guess, C-two and went to C-four. I mean, it's been pretty active in the zoning world in the past, and so, I think this is a good use for it. Glad to see a user coming.
Is there any other discussions? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven to zero. Next item of business is item three-point-three, Zone Case Number Thirty-five Twenty-five.
Good evening, this is Zone Case Thirty-five Twenty-five. The applicant is AMD Engineering LLC for T Market Properties LLC Series Five. They're requesting a zone change from Office District, Low Density Single Family District, and High Density Residential District to Neighborhood Commercial District NC. The subject property is located west of Quaker Avenue and south of One-hundred-and-twenty-fourth Street. We've sent fifty-four notices and received back one in favor and five in opposition. Here's that notification map. The five letters received in opposition were concerned with traffic, privacy, noise in commercial uses. The property in opposition currently sits at twenty-one percent of the required two-hundred-foot notification area, and so, this will require supermajorities vote by city council to approve. Here's the aerial map. There are homes to the west, south, and north, along with commercial buildings to the north, and garden offices to the east across the street there. The zoning map shows HDR to the north and to the south, with further SF-two to the north and west. To the east is Auto Urban Commercial, AC, and Office District OF. The future land use map designates this property for residential land uses. And here are photos of the subject and surrounding property. Here's a diagram provided by the applicant. And here is a buffer yard diagram provided by the applicant. This shows buffer yards which would exceed those required by the code. Currently, they are required, in most of those areas, a ten-foot buffer type B, and they're showing in excess of that to twenty feet. The future land use map designates this area as residential low-density, and although the proposed zone change to Neighborhood Commercial is not fully consistent with this designation, it is in moderate conformance due to being adjacent to existing commercial uses and its frontage along both an arterial and a collector street. However, the rear portion of the property is surrounded by single-family residential homes, making the NC zoning designation not in conformance for that area. The proposed zone change of the front portion of this request is in conformance of the zoning ordinance, as the properties are located along Collector and Arterial Street, appropriately adjacent to the nearby commercial land uses. However, the rear portion of the property is bordered by single-family residential homes, making the proposed NC zoning designation inconsistent with the intended residential character of the area. The proposed zone change for the land fronting Quaker Avenue portion is compatible with the surrounding area, would not change the character of the existing development. However, the rear portion of the land is recommended for denial, as it is inconsistent with the adjacent land uses and could impact the established development patterns surrounding the existing residential houses. The proposed rezoning location is along Quaker Avenue and One-hundred-and-twenty-fourth Street. The Master Thoroughfare Plan from Twenty-Eighteen designates Quaker Avenue as a principal arterial and One-hundred-and-twenty-fourth Street as a collector. Staff has no objections to the rezoning of the front portion of the property, however, staff recommends denial of the proposed rezoning to Neighborhood Commercial for the rear portion of the property. I'd be pleased to answer any questions you may have at this time. Can we split these into front and back and vote on them separately?
Okay, Kristen just said they have separate meets and ballots, so yes.
Can you bring up the aerial map? So, when you say the staff recommends approval for the front, you mean just that one?
The eastern.
The L?
Yes.
And is that running through a house?
I believe it runs next to an existing house, there's a house there to the.
I think there are two on the house on the frontage.
It's not really, there's people live there. I think it should be noted, too, that to the south of that is a, that is a business. It looks like a house, but it's Ocean Spa, they do massage school and all that in there.
This is one we had a couple of years ago, too, and I think we kind of had the garden office on the other part, was kind of a compromise because of the neighborhood, is that not correct, Kristen?
That's correct.
Okay. Is anybody else having questions for staff at this time? If not, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, ask for the applicant and his or her representative.
Good evening, my name is Will Stevens with AMD Engineering at sixty-five fifteen Sixty-Eighth Street. I also have Mr. Keith Tugid here with me, he's a member of the ownership team, and I'll let him get up here in a little bit and talk about kind of his vision for this development. But, you know, I think I want to point out a couple of things. Number one, as you can see, this property has a number of different zonings on it, you know, I think the residential was annexation zoning, and then, I think, James, you talked about the garden office zoning there at the hard corner. So, you know, really, the intent here is to kind of clean the zoning up, have one commercial zoning, and we wanted that commercial zoning to be the lowest and least intense commercial zoning that we could get there. So, I included this exhibit to kind of show what this might look like from a buffer yard standpoint and from kind of a driveway standpoint. And so, you know, along the frontage along Quaker, the thoroughfare there, the intent is most likely to have two driveways that maybe share those, you know, picture three commercial frontage there with shared driveways, and then, there off One-hundred-and-twenty-fourth, you know, kind of the intent is to have one driveway that kind of comes behind those commercial uses and then maybe provides access to that rear property. And then, we also did speak with Larry and Susan, the owners of the property, that we kind of wrapped around and tried to show a wider buffer yard there and a taller fence to try and help them, maybe not change their mind, but, you know, kind of find a happy medium there. So, if you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and I may defer to Keith on some of the more use-specific questions, but.
Thank you, any questions more?
So, in this view we're looking at here, the house is included in this?
Correct.
And the house will remain there?
No, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so, right now, go back to this map. I believe that house is zoned or sits right on that, it's actually Heavy Commercial, or Auto Urban Commercial, excuse me. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Stevens at this time? Thank you.
No, you're good. I'm so sorry. So, go back to the overlay one that you had.
This one?
Yeah. So, yeah, okay, I was just looking for the access, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to this request? If so, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Susan McIntyre Dillon. I am the owner of that particular where it's shown, well, let me give you the addresses, three acres there that are improved, and I do live there, forty-four oh-five, forty-four oh-seven, and forty-four oh-nine, One-hundred-and-twenty-fourth Street. So, you can see where that buffer zone is, I've been speaking with Will, the outside of that, that is where I live, we live. We are on a senior street, I mean, we've got our neighbors, and we have been there for sixteen, twenty years. It's a quiet neighborhood, we feel that by changing this to a heavier commercial zone, this is going to impede on our privacy, on, you know, the lighting, the traffic, as everybody knows what it's like anyway, on Quaker Avenue heading south, it's just already, but at any rate. It's just already, but at any rate, as far as the zoning, we understand that that's going to be commercial there on Quaker frontage, certainly. There are beautiful garden offices across Quaker from, on that, and we always envisioned that we would have garden offices there, not lights shining in, not convenience stores, not drive-in restaurants, certainly not a smoke shop, which I'm finding in here, and various other things. At any rate, we would like for you to oppose this particular, oh, and by the way, the other thing I did want to mention is that I've not even been given an idea of what would like, they would like to put in there. So, you know, how, what am I granting as a blessing to? I don't even know what the plan is. So thank you for hearing me this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Hello, my name is Keith Too Good. I'm at 4018 139th Street. So my father-in-law is the one who bought this land several years ago, and as we've talked about, what could go there, we have gone back and forth, but my dream, my vision, is ultimately, I've been talking to a physical therapist that is wanting to go back in there. And so he is, he's a physical therapist, takes care of people. He also trains athletes, and so that began to mesh with my vision. So if, some of you may know me, a former kicker for Texas Tech, guns up, go Red Raiders. And, but I've got a big, big passion for athletes and raising up athletes. And so my vision that I've had is a sports performance type of place where we can bring young athletes in, give them the opportunity to grow and learn, surround them with physical therapy, surround them with different things. And so those hours wouldn't be like late hours, probably nine o'clock would be the latest. I think anything like that would be open. My proposal is more parking in the back and on the side towards their property, but ultimately, you know, that's our, that's our vision for it. There's, there's a, in a lot of ways, there's a lack of sports training in Lubbock. I think overall, there's just a lack of sports in Lubbock, like facilities that'll, to truly be the hub that I think we should be. But ultimately, that's, that's the vision that I have for it.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Too Good?
Quick question for you. How big would this facility be?
So the physical therapist, he's wanting around 10,000 square feet for his, for his space, and then the sports specific would probably be 20,000 plus, something like that. So room for turf, room for weights and equipment, more like a gym in essence, but it would, it would house all those things. So probably a 50-yard or so turf indoor, it would all be encompassed inside, but just the ability to train athletes the right way.
Would that fit only on that commercial track, and then the rest would be parking lot, or is it gonna go further?
So, yeah, so my, what I'd imagined is, is right where their barn is, y'all have screens in front of you? Yes, you do? Okay. All right, so right where that barn is, there's actually a drive right now that used to go to the house that used to sit there. So there was a house that sat right in the middle of that property. My father-in-law actually gave that to one of the neighbors there to move it at no cost, and so they moved that property, that house to, across the street on 124th Street. And so there was a drive that went to their garage, and so right there, there's kind of a dividing line, their fence line right there and all that. So my vision was the back half, simply because we don't need to be frontage for something like that. We're not a, we're not a restaurant, we're not a strip center or anything like that. And so it's more of a destination, if that makes sense. So you don't really need the frontage, and so we propose moving it, you know, to the
We are going to need to adjourn the meeting. Lubbock is coming into a tornado warning. We want everybody to be able to get safely home or to cover. So this meeting will be adjourned.
So before we go, if we could, Items 3.3 to 4.1, if somebody could make a motion to postpone till the July meeting?
So moved.
Motion postpone.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. This meeting is adjourned.
We'll have to, just as a point of clarification, we were in the middle of that public hearing, so we'll have to read public.